I'm going to call the August 2nd, 2021 Common Council Meeting to order. It is approximately 6:02 and welcome to the public. We're here to highlight the Conference and Learning Center, which is a gift to the community from the Healthcare Foundation. And we felt as a true partner here in the city to be able to showcase this facility is amazing for all community residents. So, welcome all to the Healthcare Foundation and their new facility. With that, I will do the pledge allegiance. Councilman Frankie.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Clerk Treasurer Parthum.
Councilman Frankie.
Present.
Councilman Vincent.
Here.
Councilwoman Kenezny.
Present.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Present.
Councilwoman West.
Here.
Councilman Galloway.
Here.
Councilwoman Cutler.
Present.
All present.
Approval of minutes, do I have a motion?
I move to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, seven zero. Before we move to petitions and comments of citizens, I have removed my mask because we have our sneeze guards, we deliver them from City Hall, and I am six feet away out in front. Anybody in the public, I would ask that you in honor of the Healthcare Foundation's rules, keep your mask on in the public unless you do come to speak before the mic. And we'll leave that to council people to decide for you what is best for you. As well, please be careful when you do come to the mic of the cords, we'd hate to see anybody trip over there. And as a reminder, our public comments are not question and answer here. You're welcome to make a statement, you have up to three minutes to make that statement. And please, no personal attacks, as we remind everybody, please stick to the item that you're here to discuss. As well, I know we have a couple of public comment cards from 39 North. If you would like, one thing we do in the city is we allow public comment, if you've signed up, to speak when we're discussing that specific item. So, we leave you an option, if you'd like to speak during public comment, or if you'd like to hold that comment and speak during the line item itself. So, we will leave that to your choice, your decision. So, with that, Randy Novak has asked to speak twice. I think he's going to speak to 39 North at the time we discuss it, but he would also like to discuss rental assistance. So, please state your name and address when you do come to the mic. Randy Novak. And you can't take your mask off when you speak.
And start. So, my name's Randy Novak, I'm the President of LaPorte County Council. I'm just here to plant the seed, and Mayor Dermody and I have talked, he welcomed me here to the council meeting to talk to the rest of the council. Recently, LaPorte County Council allocated $100,000 to start with some rental assistance to team up with the county trustees for center township, Michigan Township in... Center, Cool Spring.
Cool Spring.
Thanks. And so, because that's where the majority of the rentals are either in LaPorte City or in Michigan City. So, we pledged $100,000, United Way I mean, has pledged some money, the township trustees have money. So, inside the corporate limits, and we're not asking for LaPorte to spend their money outside of LaPorte. We're just saying, in the city of LaPorte, we would love to see you guys partner with a portion of, it doesn't have to be the $100,000, but something to go, just a match to go with what the trustees are doing, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to say Randy has been a great partner at the county council level, willing to work. And I've actually also discussed, based on what you're going to see tonight, and what we've talked about individually from the American Rescue Plan, about housing, and one of the biggest, largest needs in LaPorte County. We've also asked, I've also pitched Randy on the idea of the county, which we are in the county, of supporting with maybe a million dollars coming back as we start developing true, clean, humane housing for the largest, poorest area in the county. So, and Randy did not commit, obviously, but at least listen and talk, so we have negotiations and discussions going in on both sides. Next, Marty Chidalek. And again, please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Marty Chidalek. I live on F Street. I talked to the city council about a month and a half ago, maybe two months ago, about discussing an ordinance for Airbnbs. I've not seen anything on that, I petitioned the entire council at once, I've not seen you all bring that up. So, I'm repetitioning the council that you all would discuss, an Airbnb ordinance, because New Buffalo and Michigan City have cited that they're having difficulties with their Airbnbs. And I'm petitioning all of you council members, all at once, so I don't have to call you individually, to look into this and drawing up an ordinance for Airbnbs, so that we don't run into the trouble that New Buffalo and Michigan City are running into, and I'm sure thousands of other communities. Please accept my petition and discuss this.
And Mr. Chidalek, what were those problems that they're having? Because we have not seen those.
They're seeing the disruption, New Buffalo specifically is seeing disruption in the communities. So, you have the people who have lived there for decades, before New Buffalo grew like it is right now, and LaPorte's going through this phase. You, Mayor, are pushing the community to grow. And so, there's concern in that area that people who have lived here long before the growth, maybe that is petitioned to be coming, or wanting to be brought in. And so, that's just one thing where the local community might be disturbed by large gatherings of people who don't live in the community come and visit these Airbnbs and create disturbances in the communities over the weekends, or even over the weeks, when other people have like school nights and work nights and such like that.
And have you heard of, is there a specific area in LaPorte where this is a problem with an Airbnb? Because we want to make sure in the meantime, we also get code enforcement and our police department on that. Do you know which address or we're having those issues?
No, I'm asking the city council to nip this in the bud before anything like that does occur.
Okay, thank you. Comments, questions? Now, we do have two comment cards regarding 39 North, so we'll leave that to the individuals. First, Ed Arnold. Okay, Mark Childress? Okay, so we will hold those. Are there any petitions, comments online?
No.
And we are streaming live on Facebook, just for, and I believe YouTube? Even though I can't find it or get to it, but I know younger people can. So, let's move to standing committee reports. Councilman Frankie.
Thank you, Mayor. The school board will meet on this coming Monday, the 9th, 6:00 PM, at the old Boston Middle School. I know everybody is looking forward to hear what their mask policy will be, and I believe they're going to announce that at that time. The redevelopment commission met on last Wednesday. The Don George Building was put out for bid, and one came in for that. A light pole in front of the fire station down the road from here, near the Chessey Trail, was hit, and they're verifying with insurance to make sure this will be covered. And a motion was placed to replace that light pole. Flaherty and Collins is ready to start leasing, and they are going to put a trailer up across from the building on Truesdale. And the redevelopment commission approved that, because it will be on city use. And budget workshop was discussed and scheduled for the redevelopment commission in order to start working and finalizing things for 2022. The Diversity and Inclusion Committee met two Thursdays ago and did a tour of the library's new exchange facility. It is a phenomenal resource for our community, and I'd encourage anybody who hasn't seen it to go and check it out. They're doing a soft opening right now, working out any kinks that may arise, and will have a grand opening in the near future, but it's still open to the public now. So, if you haven't been there, go check it out, there's a lot of cool things going on there. And this doesn't have to do with the committee, but the YMCA is in need of volunteers for the tour to LaPorte, which is happening in two weeks. So, people can go to tourto Laporte.org/volunteers, and any time slot that the community could volunteer for would be greatly appreciated. I think it's an awesome event, not just for the city, but for the county, and any volunteers would be appreciated. That's it.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Park Board met at the Civic Auditorium on July 21st. Approval was given for the layout of the new nine-hole disc golf course that will be located at Kessling Park. Permission was given for off-road parking near Cummings Lodge during this year's Tour to LaPorte that will be taking place, like Councilman Frankie said, August 20th through August 22nd. The delivery of the kayak lockers has been delayed until later this month. Anyone that was sent to rent a locker may opt for a refund or roll over towards next year's rental. And then, lastly, Traffic Commission will be meeting tomorrow, 6:00 PM, at the police station.
Councilman Vincent.
Yeah, nothing to report this evening?
Councilman Galloway.
Police Merritt Commission will meet a week from tomorrow, the 10th, 2:00 at the police department, and the BFW has a rib cook all Saturday.
And I assume you have judges?
We hope.
Councilwoman Cutler.
The Bid Board will meet this month on Monday, August 9th, at 5:00 PM at City Hall. And there was no meeting in July for the UEA, so no report for there, but the next meeting of the UEA will be on Wednesday, August 18th, at 4:00 PM at City Hall.
Councilwoman West.
The Fire Merritt Commission will meet this Wednesday, August 4th, at 6:00 at Fire Station Number One.
Councilwoman Kenezny.
The Tree Commission will meet next on August 19th in Council Chambers at 5:00 PM. The HPC will next meet on August 17th in Council Chambers at 5:30 PM. The Airport Authority, a big week is coming up for the Airport Authority and the LaPorte Airport. The LaPorte Airport will host Airfare 2021, the week of August 9th through the 15th. The Arizona Commemorative Air Force B-25 will be on display all week, along with a slew of other events that are open to the public. The Annual Pancake Breakfast will be held on Sunday, August 15th. This year, it's hosted by the Lions Club. For more information, please check out www.laportairport.com. Fuel sales remain strong through July, fuel prices will remain the same through the balance of the Oshkosh Air Show. The Airport Authority will next meet on Wednesday, August 11th, at 5:15 at the airport.
Thank you. We'll now move to item number seven, introduction of a resolution terminating the 39 North Conservancy District Water Supply and District Distribution Agreement. Before we do that, I guess department heads don't feel the need that they have to sign in with a card. And Mr. Schreiber, the man of the hour from this weekend, he would, he did want to come up and speak during public comment, and since he is the king of Lake Fest, we felt like we needed to honor Mark for all his work and effort. And I would like to say, if he walks up here, can we give him a round of applause? Mark did a fantastic job leading the first ever Lake Fest here in LaPorte, and the event planner was not on his business card or in the description of work that he does, but he stepped up and created a special weekend.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I thought you forgot me, but I appreciate you bringing me up. And I'll try to keep it under three minutes, but after a weekend like we just had, that's really difficult. There are some people that I do want to thank and recap really quickly, but first and foremost, I want to thank the mayor, this was his vision. He whispered this to me, I think about two years ago, he said, you know, we need a big festival, we need to do something on a large scale. And he charged me, and we put together a committee with putting together something that was impactful for the whole community. And we had tremendous community support. The attendance at the events this weekend was just tremendous. The community spirit was wonderful. I do want to thank that committee, we had a short period of time, we were green-lighted in April to get this year's event put together, and they did a tremendous job. Everybody was a contributor, and it turned out wonderfully. We also had a great group of volunteers that came out, I think all those that were able to give some of their time. When we decided to do this, we knew that the city or the Park Department itself could not put together the type of weekend that we were charged with doing, something that would be that impactful. We knew what we wanted it to be, we just had to find partners to do it, and we knew we had the community that would do it. So, we reached out to community partners, and not a single one that we reached out to said no, because we've got partners, we have organizations that do these things, and they do them very well. So, I did want to briefly, if I could thank those partners, I want to thank the Dunes Volleyball Club, the LaPorte Economic Advancement Partnership, the LaPorte Young Professionals, the Co-op Shops, Kiwanis Club, the LaPorte County Family YMCA, the LaPorte County Library, the Collective, the Northwest Indiana Paddling Association, the LaPorte Lake Association, and the LaPorte Yacht Club. They allowed us to put on 18 events over three days, we would not be able to do that without them. A lot of our events, if not all of them, were free, only the participatory things, such as the sand volleyball, or the 5K run, or the Venetia Night Parade. Those had an entry fee, obviously, to participate in them. Everything else was free to our community, and we brought in some outstanding entertainment. Wonderful. So, if you were out there for Wayne Baker Brooks, or Rich Hardesty, or for the Latin Music Festival on Sunday, you saw first-class entertainment, and it was just wonderful. But one of our top sponsors, and it's because of our sponsors, we were able to do that. But one of our top sponsors was the Visit Michigan City LaPorte, our tourism bureau, who brought in the jet skis at a great expense, and we can't thank them enough for putting that anchor event together for us. But our other platinum sponsors were Nipco, American Licorice, the Indiana Kentucky Ohio Regional Council of Carpenters, Dunland Media, and Reprographic Arts. Our gold sponsors, LaPorte Chrysler, LaPorte Stark Pulaski Building Trades Council, Larson Danielson Construction, Flaherty and Collins, USI Consultants, American Rentalit, Lock Mueller Group, and Northwest Health. And our silver sponsors, General Insurance Services, First Source Bank, Centaur Bank, Horizon Bank, and Cubit Networks. So, they allowed us to fund and put together just what was a wonderful weekend, and I can assure you, it will be back next year. Matter of fact, those discussions started this morning on making the plans, so we're very excited for it. And again, we thank the community first and foremost for supporting it and making it a big success, so thank you very much.
Questions for Mr. Schreiber? Comments?
No questions, but thank you, I thought everything was awesome.
Well, I appreciate that, and the mayor kept pointing out that it was my birthday on Friday, so I've been, I've gotten more happy birthdays this year than any of my previous 51 years, so thank you very much for that, so, thank you.
So, just remember, as I told them today, 2022, better than ever. So, that'll be the next Lake Fest round, and thank you, Mark. All right, we will move now to item number seven. So, we do have some comment cards here, and again, first we'll call Ed Arnold to the microphone. Well, this is when we have public comment before this line, Mr. Childress? Sure, absolutely. And Mark, if you could state your name and record name and address for the record.
Well, thank you for allowing me to address the council tonight. My name is Mark Childress.
I'm sorry, Mark, can you, yeah, can you hear?
Okay, my name is Mark Childress, and I'm the President of the 39 North Conservancy District. I'm also one of the owners of TFCO, we're a manufacturing company that resides in the district. I've put together a little thing here, I hope it makes sense, I'll try to get through it as quickly as possible. The 39 North Conservancy District was formed in 1999. Its goal is to provide water and sewer to the homeowners and businesses on the north side of LaPorte, due to the poor water and the well conditions and the failing septic systems. The systems, this system has successfully served the community for 22 years. Currently, the 39 North District is at our max capacity for fire suppression for our requirements, due to the growth and expansion. However, we have ample daily flow. We only use a fraction of our daily allowance set forth in our water service agreement that we have with the city of LaPorte. Our current service agreement states that we have a maximum flow of 1,500 gallons per minute that covers basic fire and service. So, your faucet and fire suppression comes out of that number. Our daily total allowance is 500,000 gallons per day. We currently, on an average, the 39 North Conservancy District flows 35,500 gallons per day, and that's based on a four-month average. I could go longer, but that's only 7% of our total allowable draw. The solution, based on discussions with the city, and the Port's Water Department, and our engineers, is that the water tower is now required. The 39 North Conservancy District is actively pursuing three separate grants to purchase and install a 500,000 gallon water tower and provide the necessary, to provide the necessary fire suppression and supply to the district. It is our belief that with our 250,000 match grant, that one of these grants could be awarded. By my last count, we have 108 service connections, some water and sewer, some sewer only. The district customers affected by this decision will be Haynes International, Hickman Williams Company, Liquid Carbonic, TFCO, IBEW Union Hall, Nova Basement Systems, the Villas at Briar Leaf, Portofinos, Family Express, the Hampton Inn, Walsh Kelly, and all the other businesses and residents served by the district. These businesses and these residents are vital to LaPorte's overall economy. I should not have to explain that the employees of these businesses may live inside LaPorte city limits. The employees that pay the city taxes, they pay the wheel tax, they pay their stormwater utility fee, they cash their checks, they buy their gas, and they buy their groceries downtown. LaPorte City Council canceling the water service agreement will have devastating effects to all those existing businesses and the new projects already in motion. I can only assume that the majority, if not all, projects will terminate, should you choose to discontinue the services to the district which it purchases. I will add that the district has never been late on a payment. It is our goal to work hand in hand with the city on infrastructure requirements, billing services, and any maintenance provided by the city to the district system. Any work performed by the city utilities on the 39 North Conservancy District infrastructure is billed to the district and paid by the district. Discussions with city officials at our October Board Meeting, the city informed us that because the district does not reside within the city limits, they could not assist us with the water tower infrastructure. However, Mayor Tom Dermity offered to sign a letter of support, should the district request it. We appreciate that. Instead of terminating the water service agreement, please consider as an opportunity, this as an opportunity to reevaluate the true priorities at hand. Consider the growth to the north, to the north as vital to the city of LaPorte's success, and that is in LaPorte's best interest. Evaluate how to adjust the city's infrastructure to meet the demands of the growth in and around it. Treat us as a valued customer and a partner of the city. Please consider the effects of this decision to the business owners, the employees, the residents of the Conservancy District, and look to the long-term effects. And consider, and consider an agenda item such as this to be a dangerous, short-term solution to a problem that should be celebrated and embraced. We ask that you grow with us, not exclude us, and our customers from the service simply because we're on the opposite side of the line.
Thank you. Questions? Ed Arnold. And again, you can't take your mask off if you'd like to speak at the microphone.
Edward Arnold, 4155 North State Road, 39, LaPorte, and a resident of LaPorte for over 60 years. And I say LaPorte because I feel like I'm a resident of the city of LaPorte, not the county of LaPorte. This meeting and being on this agenda has blindsided me. I was quite shocked that it was included in an agenda in a new facility, and that the district wasn't officially notified. We had approximately one and a half hours' notice of this meeting. I don't think that is proper. Twenty, I'm an original board member, and I will tell you that a little over 20 years ago, this problem was discussed with the city, and the bottom line is, the city didn't have the money to help us. The city could not afford to run the water lines up 39 North. The city could not offer us a solution, so a group of us, initially 22 people, took a leap of faith and indebted themselves for the next 20 years. I will tell you, that was not an easy burden. I personally almost lost my property waking up one day with $50,000 tax bill. This was a group of citizens that tried to do the right thing to help themselves, and they were willing to foot the bill. I just don't think it's right that the city should use their leverage to try to force their will upon this group of good citizens that paid their own way. We have no issues. Our system is a Cadillac. It's a diamond that I know the city would enjoy. But we're also a paying customer, and the city is profiting from the relationship with 39 North. The rates have been increased to the maximum, within a half a percent, of allowed by law for an out-of-city entity. So, we're paying our fair share. We're growing, and right now, on the table is a condominium complex with over 40 units on Briar Leaf Golf Course that Mr. Magnuson and his group wants to develop. I personally have a assisted living facility down at State for approval, and what you do here tonight will affect those projects terribly. Any banker looking at our project that gets wind of what you're trying to do here is going to drop us like a hot potato. It's not time to say, well, we'll talk in three years. It's time to get it fixed now. Sign the water agreement, get it done, it's the right thing to do. And don't turn this into something that just the attorneys win. We're talking a lot of money here, we're talking in excess of a $10 million development on the assisted living, and I'm sure about the same for the housing at the golf course. You said earlier that housing is needed. Well, there's poor communities that need housing, but guess what? LaPorte needs better senior services. Part of our facility is memory care. That is a growing need, and we're maxed out here. So, if you have a loved one that needs memory care, good luck, they're going out of town to get the services they need. So, fix this, don't delay it, don't hang it out for three more years, let's just get it done. Mayor, I asked to meet with you, with members of our board, and we were told, unless you're willing to talk annexation, there's no reason to meet. Well, no, it's time to sit down, as the President of the council suggested. So, I'll reiterate that we're ready to meet when you are.
And I'm going to respond to that, because I told you over a year ago, we came to a meeting and specifically told you, Mr. Arnold, that we were going to stop the, we were going to stop the agreement unless you solve the water issues that put non-residents at risk. Non-residents at risk, number one. Number two, you were just in my office discussing this whole arena and in support of, hey, if I understand. If you want to eliminate and have our fire department cover, you'll sign a contract that you offered us. To have our professional fire service cover your area up there. And you were in my office to discuss this, you set a meeting, you were there with Tim Warner, Jerry Jackson, our fire department. So please don't say, we over a year ago told you, we were prepared to talk. What is your solution, we'd love to hear that solution, I've heard nothing from you. You talk about, and let me finish, cause I allowed you to speak. Financially, how much money do you have in the bank at, uh, through the thirty-nine North Conservancy District? Is it a million dollars or a little bit more?
I'm not going to answer that question.
Well, you answered it.
I'm not the treasurer, we have offered in writing a quarter million dollars to support a water tower project. That we hope would be in partnership with the city of LaPorte and the county, problem is, nobody wants to partner.
Again, but you told us you have over a million dollars in the bank for thirty-nine North.
We don't, and we never did.
You've never had?
No.
So, okay, so you don't, then how do you know if you're not?
I, I don't know the exact figure, but I'm, I'm not gonna.
I'm basing on what you told us.
That we have a quarter million dollars available for this project and we voted on that and issued a letter accordingly.
So we are very open, but to say we haven't been working at this, it's a, it's three years. We've been giving notice, haven't heard from anybody. For our water, there are issues in the city that are created because of this relationship and you'll hear about those. But, um, Mr. Arnold, I'll look forward to your call to set up a, a time with the solution then.
I, I hope you will meet this time.
I did meet last time.
We were told by, uh, uh, a third party who was directed by the president of the council that there was no interest in meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Arnold.
Well, that.
I appreciate that.
That's what it was. But, uh, we're ready to move forward when you are and wanna get this quickly resolved.
Mr. Arnold, I have a question too, cause you said only the lawyers will benefit and I promise you, I, there's not a benefit here, but. I don't remember specifically, but did thirty-nine North have a billboard that said city utilities, no city taxes at any, at any point?
Thirty-nine North has never had a billboard that I'm aware of, is it on the website or something?
Have, have you ever had that on your website?
I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. We will now move Randy Novak, if you'd like to speak. And Mr. Novak, I believe you were at the meeting too with Mr. Arnold, correct?
Not, no, 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 I had a previous meeting with Mr. Arnold regarding his development, which I support one hundred and ten percent, any development out there. I just wanna go on record, I have never spoke for Tom Dermity and if I did. I might give him a hard time about a lot of things, but I, I don't speak his words. Um, but, but I will say this, Tom Dermity's, Mayor Dermity's message has been clear from the beginning. And that message is thirty-nine North Conservatory District needs to fix the issue or get out of the way. That's what it is, nobody's trying to, and I, I'm speaking for myself in the county, I'm not. We're doing, we're, we're doing more, the redevelopment commission of LaPorte County is doing more to fix this problem than thirty-nine North is. I mean, we've got two or three grants, we're using our grant person, we're spending the money to get this done, applying here, applying there, doing everything we can to do it. This, this system was never built to the specs that the city of LaPorte told them they needed to do it to when they first did it. And, and I just wanna give a little bit of history real quick and I'll, I'll talk fast. About three years ago, I'm also the, I'm the chairman of the LaPorte County Fire Chiefs Association, retired with thirty-five years in the fire service. Um, I'm the chairman of the redevelopment commission, so I, I know a lot about this particular area. About three years ago, Cool Spring Fire Department was assistant center township and they had to fill up a tanker and they filled it up over by the old fire station there on Johnson Road. A previous employee, it might've been Tim. Came out and yelled at him and said, what are you guys doing, you can't just open a hydrant along, and this is along Johnson Road. They're like, well, what's the problem? So this chief calls me, we came in and, um, I think Todd was here at the time, said in Andy's office, go, what's the problem? You know, that you're yelling at our guys cause they open a hydrant. He goes, you don't understand how this is. When you open a hydrant somewhere along the dead end on thirty-nine North or the T that goes off down Johnson Road. If you open one of those hydrants, if the timing's right and things are, and I'm not saying, without sucking off of it. You, you take a chance on Portofinos water drying up. So that actually happened one time where they opened up a hydrant, it might've been fighting a fire or doing something. And Portofinos water dried up. So that's, to me, that is devastating as a, as a fire personnel. Chairman of the Fire Chiefs Association, so, and you know, they talked fifteen hundred gallons and I noticed. They said, the day-to-day operations, in other words, flushing your toilets, getting water, filling a tub, I, we agree. There, there's enough water for that, but if you need to fight a fire anywhere along there, it's, it's not sufficient. Our, our pumpers pump twelve hundred and fifty gallons a minute. So if that thing's pushing out fifteen hundred, but you, you're taking three hundred off, one truck is gonna suck the main dry going out all the directions. So it, it is a huge problem, it has to be fixed before any expansion can be out there. And I'm not saying, you know, like I said, I'm not speaking against any development, I'm one hundred percent for it. We just need to find a solution and that's how I engaged with, uh, Mayor Dermity and, and, and his fire chief, Andy Snyder, who's done a great job and Tim. Trying to find a solution to this, so.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And before we read the resolution, we are here today because this agreement is up in just over three years, attorney notice?
Correct, uh, May fourth, twenty twenty-five, so it's, it's almost a four-year notice, it's much longer than is required by the contract.
And you're gonna hear from Fire Chief Snyder, you're gonna hear from Water Superintendent Tim Warner. Concerns, and here's what I'm gonna tell you, number one. When I hear Andy Snyder say, there is a safety issue for non-residents, that it is unsafe for fire protection. It is a dangerous situation. And we saw on a different venue with what just happened in Miami, we were made aware, we now know this. Are we supposed to just turn away and ignore this problem as if it's not happening and we wait till there's a fire? A devastating fire at one of the businesses or a fire at a residence home that there's not enough water suppression to handle that fire. That's on us, ethically, morally, however you wanna talk about it, so that's number one. Number two, as Randy had mentioned, there's a lack of recommended infrastructure that was put in from the city of LaPorte. And three, understand profitable, you heard that it might be profitable, understand that the clerk treasurer's office does everything. They do billing, they do payments, they follow up on people that aren't paying their bills. They have to break down and we can show you individually all the time that is spent by this department for non-residents. And I'm not saying that's good or bad or either, it's just fact. We wanna be a partner, but there's a lot of time that is spent, and I encourage any of you that want to go in, uh, they receive a bulk rate. We do the billing to the end-user customers and thirty-nine North receives the funds in between. So the profit, whatever you might wanna say, all goes to the thirty-nine North Conservancy District, not to the city for non-residents. So those are three-part, uh, concerns that we have. For the city moving forward, so with that, I'd like to call Councilman Galloway with the resolution.
Are you ready?
We're ready.
You need a motion?
I do need a motion.
You need a motion to read it.
I need a motion to approve or to read.
Your honor, I would like to introduce a resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Councilman Galloway.
A resolution terminating the thirty-nine North Conservancy District water supply and distribution agreement. Whereas the city of LaPorte here in city, and the thirty-nine North Conservancy District here in thirty-nine NCD. Collectively referred to as the parties entered into a water supply and distribution system agreement on September ten, nineteen ninety-seven. Whereas the parties on May four, two thousand and five entered into an agreement to the original amendment. Creating more water capacity from the city to the thirty-nine NCD and extending the agreement between the parties for twenty years. From the date of the amendment. Whereas the May four, two thousand and five amended agreement provides either party. May terminate the agreement upon providing the other party with three years notice of termination. Whereas the city of LaPorte, through its common council and its Board of Public Works desires to terminate the thirty-nine NCD water supply. And distribution agreement effective May four, twenty twenty-five. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of LaPorte as follows. One, that the thirty-nine North Conservancy District water supply and distribution agreement is terminated effective May four, twenty twenty-five. And two, the mayor is directed to take all necessary action to terminate the thirty-nine North Conservancy District water supply. And distribution agreement terminated effective May four, twenty twenty-five.
Now because this is a resolution, obviously you understand that this can pass this evening. Uh, before we have discussion, I would like to call, uh, Andy Snyder first from our fire department to discuss, so you hear from a, uh, safety perspective. And Andy, please state your name and. For the record.
Andy Snyder, Fire Chief, City of LaPorte Fire Department, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, yeah, when this, uh, subject came up about the renewal of this agreement, uh, was asked my opinion of it. Plain and simple, I said it's unsafe and it's a dangerous situation and we've known that for a while. It needs to be fixed before, in my opinion, you need to consider, uh, moving forward with adopting any extension of it. Reasons that I say that is that I, I know that there's been a couple of comments already about Cadillac system, a diamond system, that is not the case. This, uh, council president Novak mentioned that this is proven already to be problematic just in a training situation. He kind of alluded to it, but center township in one instance, a couple of years ago, um, was just having a training system, uh, situation where they tapped one of those hydrants. In that case, the Portofinos called our water department, Hampton Inn called our water department, asked why we shut off their water. So they, that red flagged with us right there. What even red flagged more with me was that superintendent of the water department at the time asked to meet a facility, a meeting with center township to ask them to kind of not do that. Uh, it's not a good situation when you can't practice something because you don't have a sufficient water supply. You know, and it's one thing, and there's volunteer departments throughout the county and I, I used to be one of, um, on one of those volunteer departments. But the thing is, is if you're going to sell something as a fully sufficient hydrated system, then you need to deliver on that. And I'm dealing with it, I know they've talked about the economic impact of it, I'm all for it, just like Councilman President Novak is. But in the same aspect, mine more importantly is life safety. And I would be negligent if I didn't stand here and not tell you that there is a life safety issue. Um, as mentioned, liability, you know, that's come to light here recently with what's going on down in Florida. And that's what prompted some of these discussions is that from our end of it, from the city's end of it, you know, we could say, it's okay, but it's not. And I want you to make sure the liability end of it and that I would be negligent if I don't stand here and give you the background that it is not sufficient right now. It, it may have been sufficient when it was put in, but there's a lot more out there than there is right now. And I, I know that he said it's maxed out, it's not maxed out, it is beyond maxed out. And the numbers that I use for that come from NFPA eleven forty-two. And those are the ones that sets the standards of water flows and occupancies and, um, the amount of water. Uh, for a certain structure that it would take to put out a fire in there. We don't meet that with the flows that are out there. They, they do fine with just normal day-to-day use, they both, everybody agrees to that. But from my standpoint, life safety is the main issue right here, it does not meet it, it hasn't met it for a long time and it, something does need to be done.
Chief Snyder, if I could just ask you something that we've talked about, can you guarantee if there's a fire at Briar Leaf? Or one of the businesses across the street, can you guarantee you have enough fire suppression to put that out?
No, and again, it would be center township to start with, but we run back up to center township. No, I can guarantee you that because they proved that fact with their training exercise. They, I know Randy mentioned about twelve hundred and fifty gallon a minute pumpers, ours are all fifteen hundred gallon a minute pumpers, we have a two thousand gallon a minute tower. Um, that one is the one that we would rely on for that, you know, some of those industries out there. But as you go back to, um, as you just mentioned, Mayor, those, uh, buildings within the, um, golf course area or anything like that. The numbers that I'm talking about even with eleven forty-two, NFPA eleven forty-two, and those are the standards that set building codes across the world almost. But those numbers right there also, that's not even withstanding the exposures, uh, dangers that are in there. So if you have another building that is close by to a, a large fire, um, then you add in an entirely another, a set of water flows. And we're talking, you know, two thousand gallons a minute, now we've just not only have to worry about the fire that they're worried about. Now we've gotta worry about an additional amount that there's just not the capacity for it. Give you a little bit of background, um, you know, we deal within the city and I know Tim will talk a lot more about this probably. But we have redundancies in our system, in the city, that was never designed into that system. When I say redundancies is that our system, if we get a large fire like that, we can hit multiple hydrants. And we'll pick up from other loops that will supply us additional water, cause we do have some mains that are similar in size. But that's all that they have out there is what is that single main supplying everything. Ours allow us to hit other sources to be able to adequately supply fire suppression throughout our city. So it's, it, again, it comes back to, as council president, uh, Novak mentioned, I am not opposed to anything out there, I just want it fixed. From our standpoint, from their citizen standpoint, because we do, we could very easily get called out there. To help them because we do have a mutual aid agreement throughout the county and we do, uh, work with center township and we will happily do that. But we wanna make sure that our personnel are safe at the same moment too.
Further questions for Chief Snyder? Thank you, Chief. Tim Warner, Water Superintendent. We don't take public comment during our public meetings? Do we?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, uh, my name's Tim Warner, I'm the superintendent of the city of LaPorte Water Department. Um, up here to talk to you about tonight is the infrastructure, the infrastructure of thirty-nine North. So back in ninety-seven, ninety-eight, uh, visitor came to the city of LaPorte about building a water system out there. We had already done a study to serve that area, uh, before that and shared those results with the district. Those result, those, that study was paid for on the city's dime, clearly in this letter, it, it gives two different options. You install a sixteen-inch water main without a water tower or you install a twelve-inch water main with a water tower. They kinda cherry picked those ideas, went with their own engineering company and through the developers. And put a twelve-inch, twelve-inch main in with no water tower. Uh, limits are limits, you know, here, here in the city when we're fighting a fire, fire like Andy was saying, we're, we're a grid system. Uh, so there's, there's multiple loops, multiple mains that we can pull, pull off of. We have several towers for stored water to send that water different directions to feed the fire hydrants. Uh, in the area where there's a working fire, that's not possible out in thirty-nine North. Even if, even with our towers here in town, if we were to drop low pressure, we have multiple pumps we can bring online between our, our two water filtration plants. That's just not the case in thirty-nine North. You can only put so much water through a twelve-inch pipe, that's, that's the physical limits of the system, it's plain and simple. There, there's no turning up any more pumps, there's no diverting water a different direction, it is what it is and that's all we can put out. Normal flow in this district at any given time is between eighty to three, eighty to four hundred gallons a minute. That leaves eleven hundred, cause I'm, we're talking, let's, let's talk about the three, four hundred gallon a minute limit, that leaves eleven hundred gallons a minute for fighting a, a fire in that district. Those hydrants in that area, that's a pressure zone for us, so they're at a little higher system pressure than the city, can easily throw out twelve hundred gallons a minute. Essentially what that means is when a fire department pulls up to a fire in that area, they have a decision to make. You let this fire suppression system, if there is one, work, or you open one hydrant. That's it. There's no other water. There's no other pumps to turn on. There's no other loops to grab on to to send more volume of water to that area. When the district has a high flow event, that's what we're going to call where they are pulling, uh, close to that max or over that max. Uh, that creates big problems for city residents, city residents, especially Pine Lake Ave, the surrounding area. It creates high velocity in the pipes there because the water is surging up thirty-nine and creates dirty or discolored water for the businesses and residents in LaPorte. Of no fault of their own, no fault of the water department's own. So I, I want to make that clear. The, when these events happen out there, it affects city residents. I don't have very much more to talk about than that. Like I said, the, the, the limitations are there. They can't be changed. By adding a water tower, so now you have fifteen hundred gallons that can come from the booster station. And when you have a water tower on the north end, that also allows that same amount of water to come the other way. So now you've doubled that capacity out in that area. You gotta have stored water. You gotta have stored water. That, that's a dead end system. As you all know, we've been hammering in the city to, to revolve, to resolve some of our dead end issues in town. And this is a prime example of it. Prime example of it, but on a very larger scale. If anybody's got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So Mr. Warner, the infrastructure, the pipes, is there improvement that has to happen? There still has to be work done there, correct?
Yeah, I, to, to make the system function the way that it should have been built, it should have another reinforcing, uh, feed to the booster station, uh, instead of just one line coming to the booster station. You know, the pipe's in the ground. There, there's no change in that. So if, if we're not going to tear up, you know, and run all new pipe, we have to get that stored water in the air, water tower. So then my concern becomes not turning that water over at night. You know, if they put up a five hundred thousand gallon uh, tower, you know, they, they told you, they're, they're way below their, uh, their contract limits, you know, on normal usage. Uh, their numbers were a little low. I ran my own numbers. The, the lowest average is thirty-three thousand for a month. The higher average is around sixty thousand. So, you know, they're, they're still well within their contract on a normal basis, but you know, fire, water systems weren't built for drinking water. They were built for fire, fire suppression. That's, that's what they were built for. Drinking water was an afterthought of those systems.
Further questions?
Would you talk about the, the high surge activity? Is that when they're expending, or one would expend more than the five hundred thousand?
Uh, more, more than the fifteen hundred.
Okay.
Uh, through the pipe at once, which has happened several different times, not only through training exercises with the Center Township Fire Department, but Haynes International, it happens every six months when they test their fire pump. Their fire pump exceeds the limitations of the system. So just because of the, the mechanics, the way that the water system works, there's a suction in on that booster station, which is our feed to that booster station. So when they start pulling those higher uh, flows than the pumps are allowing, that's what creates that high velocity through our pipes because it's still hooked to it. So it's, it's, it's pulling that water from everywhere in LaPorte to try to feed the demand.
Further questions? We don't take public comment during this time. It is a public meeting. Thank you, Mr. Warner.
Thank you.
So I would like to say a couple of things before you consider or discuss approval of this resolution is number one. Apparently, I mean, we weren't taken serious. We've been trying for over a year. I think this will get the attention. But I think also you have to understand when we have to put in writing that we cannot guarantee enough water suppression to fight a fire. I know we may look, I may look like a bad guy until something bad happens. And that's something with our water has to be considered. And from an economic development perspective, I don't know if Mr. Cook could speak, uh, just if you would bear with us. You're here on another item, but all it takes is one fire with the infrastructure that we have, and what does that do to economic development?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Bert Cook, Executive Director of the LaPorte Economic Advancement Partnership. And I, I will be brief because I am going to subject you to a project later as well. Um, you know, businesses locate around utilities. I think the reason that this issue is before you and, and there is a motion that goes behind it is because it's important. When we, you know, I've, I've had the pleasure of serving in this capacity for almost fifteen years. I've stood in front of you numerous times and brought businesses here and asked you to create packs and partnerships with those businesses. And uh, the basis for that generally is the fact that we have utilities and they're locating here because we have not only utilities, but some of the best utilities in the state of Indiana. Some of my colleagues and the experts in these fields, you know, have already stood at this mic and told you that what's going on in that area is not sufficient. Um, it's a detriment to our system. There's some great businesses out there, I agree, but I can reference a hundredfold the, the businesses that we have located in the city that are dependent on these utilities that ultimately you're charged with taking care of. And we promise every one of those, those businesses that when they need water, when they need wastewater, it'll be there and it'll serve them. And so, you know, for this particular issue, it's not as complicated for me as it is for some others because uh, I think you have a severe safety issue and how would any of us feel if something were to happen out there? It, it just, it's, it's something you can't look past. Um, and, and here in front of me, you know, you, it's the LaPorte City Council. And uh, and so I feel for them. I understand that there's a desire to find a, a situation that works for, for the, for that area, but um, you all shouldn't be made as the bad guy for someone's poor decision-making in, in the original setup of that system. And frankly, that's kind of what's sitting before you today. So thank you for the opportunity to address it at least.
Questions?
If, if I may, Mayor, generally, again, I try to provide you with just legal advice, but I'm a city resident like, like the rest of you and I've worked on some pretty important uh, real estate deals with Bert in the, in the last couple of years. We just, you just annexed, uh, over two hundred acres of land into the city. Uh, the city council a year or two ago acquired land just south of Walmart that has significant, uh, potential development. And I asked Mr. Arnold earlier about, uh, billboard and, and I, I'm not sure whether it was a billboard, but it is on their website right now where they're actively comparing themselves, their tax liability to some, to a business that's in Thomas Rose Industrial Park. And so Bert's got a project he's bringing to you tonight, but Bert, what's a good batting average for an economic development director?
Three to five percent.
Three to five percent. So every time you see one, there's, there's, there's twenty or thirty deals that we've worked on, particularly Bert, that you don't see. And so um, I, I, from a fairness perspective, it, it is slightly offensive that we provide utilities to thirty-nine North. And then they actively brag that they have cheaper taxes than us and, and can provide the utility. So uh, when, when you're making Bert's job literally harder because the people that are calling us partners are actively competing against us. So, um.
And it's, it's not, it's noticed. As soon as that went up, I, you know, we had a local developer at that time that was working to build out the area that Nick is referencing, the Thomas Rose Industrial Park. And the first question asked to me was, I thought we're partners with LaPorte County, I thought we're working together. That's pretty difficult to explain when you're representing yourself in, you know, in that way. And it's a, it's a, it's a real challenge.
Further questions for Mr. Cook? Thank you. Discussion amongst council? Is there a motion?
Can I say, can I ask one thing? I don't know. Uh, uh, Tim, I don't know if this is relevant or not, but.
Mr. Warner, if you could come to the microphone, please.
Given the way our infrastructure is and we're trying to correct it in the city, any of like these surges when you know, that people are then left with that water, does that affect the city's infrastructure at all?
Oh, it's definitely hard on the city's infrastructure. Uh, creates water hammer, which can create, uh, main breaks. And, and, and just, uh, the, the discolored dirty water, you know, that you know, what's, what's down Pine Lake Ave, our restaurants, our hotels, and including all the residents that live in that area. It, it, it creates big, big issues. Uh, we're scrambling to first fi- find out what's going on, what's going on, you know? Cause we noticed the pressure drops around town, stars, towers start dropping. You know, it sends our guys into action right away to fire up more pumps. Uh, and then to come, you know, find out that the surge is out this way. Um, like I was saying, there, there's, there's no separation between the systems. So, um, when those pumps max out, we're still pushing that pressure, uh, to the suction side of the, of the booster station. And in, in the city, we have the stored water. We have the grid system. So that water comes from every direction to meet that demand. Mm-hmm. Any, anything else?
Not a question for Tim per se, but I, so if, um, the council votes in favor of terminating the agreement, there's still an opportunity for the thirty-nine Conservancy to engage in conversations with the city. Uh, you know, I'm not stating that they're going to fully fund a, a water tower or whatever else, but that, this is a, a three-year basically opportunity to figure something out prior to then, correct?
Absolutely. And the one thing is we want to work with thirty-nine North. We want to work with them, but I'll tell you, we want the infrastructure updated. The city shouldn't pay for that. Um, you know, we do a lot of work in the billing and as you talk about lean government, I'm not sure with all due respect to the thirty-nine North Conservancy, what purpose they serve other than collecting funds. And as I've said with Mr. Novak, maybe the best thing is, uh, to eliminate the thirty-nine North Conservancy and talk direct between the county, the city and the residents, because we care about the residents and the business. And does that talk about, do we talk about waiver of annexation? Do we talk about also engaging our professional fire department? Absolutely. But if not, we have to take care of our residents as well in the city. Um, and you hear the issues that we face because of that. So absolutely, but I think this, basically what you're saying is no longer can we move as is.
So profitability is, is one issue, but the, the thing that continues to resonate with me is this life safety issue that Chief Snyder talked about. Um, that, that's the part that I can't get past and it, it's been reiterated by, uh, the other department heads as far as flow suppression capability. Um, so thank you for clearing that up. Just wanted to make sure I understood the process.
Further questions?
And I'll comment, one, one last comment. If you didn't take any action, this would just continue to roll over year after year after year. So if it, it's, and I, we couldn't renegotiate. It would just keep rolling over. So I, I think, uh, Ms. uh, Councilwoman Conizzi, that's kind of what you were asking is doesn't mean that we can't have a relationship with them after twenty twenty-five. It's just in order to start even any negotiating, that's what needs to happen.
And we'd start, certainly like to see a, a new agreement sooner than, we don't want to wait till, we're not interested in waiting till twenty twenty-five. We want to do it and do it now.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. And again, for anybody here from thirty-nine North, uh, don't feel you have to stay for the remaining portion of the meeting. You're welcome to leave at any point. Or anybody else that might be here regarding that issue. We'll now move to guest speakers, Matt Burton and Dr. John M.D. from, uh, Porter Stark. And one thing we hear a lot from the public is what is the community doing about the drug issue, just like many communities across our region, state and our nation. And I thought it would be great for the council to start hearing about what is happening to address these issues, uh, in our community. So, um, Mr. Burton will be brief, but to the point of just sharing, uh, this is what's happening. This is one item that's happening in the city. So Matt Burton, welcome, and we look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Thank you, Mayor Dermody, and, and thanks to all the council members for having us here, uh, this evening. Um, I wanted to talk briefly about the Recovery Center LaPorte, uh, which is one of Indiana's newest opioid treatment programs or O T Ps. And I promise that's only one of two acronyms I'll ask you to, uh, memorize tonight, but it's important because it talks about uh, the professionalism of this and the regulatory nature of it. An O T P is something that exists all across the nation and it's something we have here now in LaPorte. Um, our purpose is to provide a combination of medication and counseling services for people with opioid use disorders, as well as other types of addictions, but really the Recovery Center LaPorte focuses specifically on opioid use disorders, which includes heroin. Um, that combination of medication along with counseling is called Medication Assisted Treatment, M A T. That's two of two. Um, so the Recovery Center LaPorte specializes in methadone and that is the key component to working with um, especially heroin and especially the, the opioid users who have tried many different avenues often. And, and this is a specific medical form of treatment that unfortunately actually Dr. John couldn't be with us tonight, so I will do my best to answer things, anything related to psychopharmacology, but I can give you my thirty thousand foot view pretty confidently on that. But before I do, I just wanted to give the timeline of this a little bit because, um, this isn't something that anybody can just open up. You can't walk into a town and just create an O T P. There has to be city support, county support, law enforcement, um, hospitals. Uh, this is something that really takes a community as well as willing partners to come in and do this. And that's who we had with Swanson Center where we're co-located here in LaPorte, as well as the Healthcare Foundation of LaPorte that gave, um, significant contribution of startup funds. Um, this is, as I mentioned, a highly regulated system, which means you have to have highly credentialed people running it. So there are startup costs to getting, uh, going over the first few years. Um, so we applied for this O T P in August of twenty eighteen as soon as it became available. Um, it was approved in twenty nineteen and we actually opened right in the throes of the pandemic in April of twenty twenty. As, as Mayor Dermity mentioned, you know, we're all acutely aware of the drug overdose problems that we have throughout the nation as well as the state. Um, you can probably heard recently, a couple of weeks ago, ninety-two thousand uh, in, in twenty twenty is what was reported nationwide. Um, Indiana is actually on a very similar curve to that with two thousand two hundred and sixty-eight reported deaths in twenty twenty. So again, that's peaking. Uh, one of the key components that is thought to, to be leading to that is the lack of access to treatment. So by having this level of treatment here, it's something that every community has. Um, I'm going to just skip that a quick second. If you can see this, this is a map back from twenty nineteen that shows why the state determined that LaPorte County was a place where an O T P could belong. You can see there were three in Lake County already, one in Porter, which is in Valparaiso, Porter Stark, uh, and one in Saint Joseph. But a hundred and ten thousand people or so in LaPorte County did not have that immediate access. In fact, Porter Stark Services saw about twenty-five percent of its clients coming from LaPorte County. So we are able to better, um, provide access to this form of treatment for those individuals. I just want to touch briefly on, uh, people's perception about LaPorte because I think every community thinks that it has the biggest heroin problem of any other community. Um, and of course, uh, every individual is important, um, but we aren't that different, um, compared to the rest of the nation or compared to the rest of the state. Uh, you can see here from data years, uh, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen how we compare in drug overdose, uh, death rate to, uh, the Indiana, which is twenty-six per hundred thousand. LaPorte County at that time was twenty-four per hundred thousand or seventy-eight people in a three-year span. Um, so that's from the most recent County Health Rankings Report. There's also the Indiana Drug Overdose Dashboard, which has some great information, so I just copied that out for your information. Again, it shows some of the emergency room, uh, visits based on, um, whether it's any drug, any opioid or heroin. And you can see LaPorte County in general tracks pretty closely, um, with the state as a whole with those data as well. A little bit higher sometimes in rates. But when you look at the raw numbers, you can see that, um, you know, we're, we're working on it. We're making some progress here. Um, so with that, oh, that was a little thing showing the population. That's a big reason why we have this here. It really maps onto kind of population density, so. So why methadone? I'll just speak briefly about this. Methadone is probably the most effective and lifesaving form of treatment for someone with an opioid addiction. It's shown to be the most effective because if you can be in this treatment and maintain this level of treatment, um, this is your best chance for recovery long-term. One of the things that is always asked is, isn't this just a drug replacing another drug? Because sometimes it's called opiate replacement therapy. Um, I will tell you this, the way I phrase it very simply is it's replacing an illicit substance with a prescription that's under the use of a doctor. So you can think of any medication that you might take. This medication has an active opioid agonist, but it's done because the person has gotten to the point where they need this to bring themselves to a certain functional level, uh, to hopefully be employed, stay employed, stay with their family, and, and that's what this treatment does. So that said, um, I do want to introduce you to our Director of the Recovery Center in LaPorte, Richard Cook, who will, uh, walk you through a little bit what life is like, um, in terms of the clinic and, and how things work there. So, Richard.
So just to piggyback on what Matt said, uh, there's a difference between dependency and addiction. So think of a uh, eighty-year-old lady that hurt her back and she goes to a pain clinic. She takes her pills every day. She knows nothing about addictions, never. takes her pills every day, she knows nothing about addictions, never been involved in addiction, goes to church on Sunday, spends time with her grandchildren, but if she stops taking that medication, she's going to have opioid withdrawals. That's dependency. What we see is dependency and addiction. Addiction is the out-of-control behavior, it's the obsessiveness with the drug, it's the continued use despite the consequences of that drug. So when somebody comes into a methadone clinic, we're dealing with both of those conditions. But as time goes on, the addiction goes away, the behavior of addiction goes away, and we're looking at somebody that's now dependent, they're not practicing addiction behavior anymore. There's this highly controlled daily dosing, so in that regard, we have security guards, we have cameras, when the person has to dose at the window every day, and when the nurse gives that person the dose, they talk to them after that dose to make sure they swallow it, that they're not cheeking it and taking out of the building. They can eventually get take-home bottles in a methadone clinic, but they have to demonstrate that they have negative drug screens, they have some stability in their environment, there's no new criminal activity, that they're complying with all the counseling requirements. They're required to do four hours of counseling a month. All of our counselors in the LaPorte Clinic are licensed clinical social workers and addictions therapists. Dr. John is a licensed board-certified psychiatrist and addictionologist, we have five RNs there, and we have a, we have an MA. We also have, so when a person comes into the clinic, we're addressing all of the challenges that they bring in, from poverty to homelessness to lack of employment, lack of, you know, poor nutrition, healthcare problems, mental health problems, and our whole system is designed to deal with those things. We also have case managers there that deal with the fundamental problems like homelessness, food, shelter issues, medication issues, helping them get primary care doctors, transportation issues. So. Yes, so is there any questions? I actually came here prepared to do this whole talk, and then Matt tells me I got like five minutes. So that really, that really threw me off, because it's complicated to explain this in just a few minutes. But what we do there, I think we're successful, and maybe I can talk a little bit about the success rates. The first thing is, you hear this term harm reduction when it comes to methadone, and that's basically just the concept that when somebody gets on methadone, we're cutting down on overdose rates, we're cutting down on deaths, we're cutting down on crime rates, we're cutting down on sexually transmitted diseases, and all that stuff that goes along with addiction, and we definitely accomplish that when someone comes in our door. But our goal is to go way, way beyond that. I mean, we're working with people to help them get GEDs, to go to college, to enter trades, to become apprentice. So we're doing all of these things to help them come be successful in their life, to reunite with their families, you know, become stable in their, with jobs and working and that kind of stuff. But I'd like to mention one perfect example of someone that was successful in a methadone, that was in a methadone clinic, and it happens to be the reason that I'm standing here. And this is a person that was an IV heroin drug user for 12 years and spent nine years in a methadone clinic. And she's my former boss, and she's the former director of the methadone clinic in Porter Stark. It was her vision, her goal, her compassion to open a methadone clinic, and she was way ahead of the curve, and she was successfully lobbied the state to open up the moratorium on the license for methadone clinics, and she eventually opened the methadone clinic in Valparaiso. But while she was on methadone, she went to college, she started working in addictions and helping people, she eventually tapered off of methadone. One of our counselors at the Porter Stark Methadone Clinic right now is also an ex-patient. I spent many years being a counselor, and I've seen numerous situations where people have gone on, they've gone through college, they've become carpenters, boiler makers, electricians, and I've seen people, you know, successfully taper off methadone, and I don't know how deep I should come in, go into this, because do I have, how much time do I have?
No, you're reaching that point, but please.
So I'm just going to stop and ask if there's any questions.
Questions?
Hey, I was a public defender for a long time, representing, kind of on the opposite end, representing a lot of these people with drug problems. What percentage of people fail going through, because it certainly happens, and I guess so that people understand here, your level is, what's your level of success with people coming through your clinic?
Well, let me answer this question like. Let me answer the question like this. When the individuals that come into our clinic are people that have to get up every day to chase drugs to not be dope sick, and they will do anything to not experience these withdrawals. So when they walk in the door, we're 100% successful in one week from the day they walk in that door, they no longer have to chase drugs. One week later, they could get up and fill a job application out, they could go visit their mother, they could spend time with their children, and so in that regard, we're very successful. Now, does everybody stop using drugs that come into a methadone clinic? No, I can't think of any chronic illness that there's 100% success. But I think that the success is there.
Yeah, and I didn't mean that in a derogatory fashion, just that it, it's a heavy lift to get, I've watched clients over and over again when I was a public defender, just continue to go through, and try methadone, they'd fail, they get, you know, and committed a lot of crimes in the process.
Yeah.
Well, and, you know, that's part of it, people think you can lock people up to do this program, or have this in-house program, and you can provide as many as you want, but when it comes down to it, you can't force people to stay and continue to show up every day. And I think that's the misnomer many people in the community have across the state, that why don't we have more, more, and more? You still can't force them to come in every day.
Yeah. Well, I mean, if you were in a methadone clinic and you seen the number of people that do improve, I think that would change your perception, because it's easy to know about the ones that fail, because they're in the system, they're disappointing people, and it's not as easy to know the people that are successful.
And Matt, you know, we hear a lot about the Healthcare Foundation of LaPorte, so I'm going to state this, you know, their focus is health and wellness. So people look at trails, 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 this is a part of health and wellness. Where would you be without the Healthcare Foundation of LaPorte?
Oh, it's, yeah, well, we wouldn't be here today doing this. This is something that, the reason there weren't more OTPs when they allowed this to happen is because there are tremendous startup costs. You have to start with all of these staff, but you have to take time to build up the patients, so. And I wanted to thank Maria too, whenever I can publicly and not, because in addition to, you know, supporting us in treatment, what the Healthcare Foundation is doing in terms of wellness is phenomenal. So looking at those trails like you're saying, this is, I mean, this is the reason why I wanted to move back to LaPorte when I was, I was gone. I was born and raised here, and I live here now, and it's the kind of place that you don't appreciate until you go away from it for a long time, and then you come back. So highlighting the best features of LaPorte, giving people something to do is, that's healthy and good, it's tremendous, so thank you, Maria, and thank you, Mayor, and everyone for having us here tonight.
And I appreciate the tour, and I'd recommend that if council members have time, they can set up a tour.
Yes, absolutely, be happy to touch base with you on that, and we do have copies of these handouts, I didn't know if you had them already, if you'd like.
Please share them.
Absolutely.
I'm curious, how many patients do you guys see on average?
Right now, we have about, what, 118 today, so even more from just a couple weeks ago.
And I too have a question, how does someone enroll in your services, or I guess what does the monetary side look like? Who's eligible for help?
Everyone is eligible for help, so if, it doesn't matter insurance or not, we're going to come and help figure out how to make it work for you. But it's covered by, we take every major insurance, we take Medicare, Medicaid, and we take those who aren't insured and try to help them get enrolled in insurance. So, and so I have brochures in there as well, so when I, before we go, I'll pass a little folder around, and you can have that, so.
Thank you.
Further questions? Thank you.
All right, thanks very much.
So we'll move now to why we're here today, the Healthcare Foundation of LaPorte, the new building, and you hear a lot about the trails and becoming healthier living, and we're so fortunate to have Maria Fruit here, the CEO of the Healthcare Foundation of LaPorte. But I just want to put out a little bit, because the public may question trails and so forth, and the health and wellness, but when you look at, I just pulled this right off their website, Healthy Minds, they support Detox Now Swanson Center, over $1 million to that facility, over almost $400,000 to LaPorte Recovery Center that we just heard today. Healthy Living, living since 2017, over $7 million to helping reduce obesity, weight-related diseases, helping the Brighton Street green space that everybody loves in our community, help fund that. Healthy Children, 2.7 million since 2017, improving education about tobacco and drug use, mental health for children, increasing access, decreasing the number of low birth weight births. And you just look at all the grants, Northwest Health, the Slicer Health Clinic at the high school, Salvation Army for the Weekend Backpack Program, which is an amazing program that over 400 kids from our community receive backpacks to eat over the weekend with food that if they didn't have that backpack, they'd be struggling to find food to eat over the weekend. So when you hear about the Healthcare Foundation of LaPorte being about trails and supporting the health and wellness, we certainly appreciate that and are a great partner, but I'll tell you what, they are so much more than that. So with that, we thought it'd be great to give you an overview, our CEO here, Maria Fruit, take it away.
Well, thank you, thank you, and I'll try to make up some time, I know that this is a long meeting for you, and, but I'm just going to focus very briefly on our vision. As you're very aware, we preach that all the time. When we started this research, we realized that LaPorte County, through the health rankings, it's a research done by University of Wisconsin, and they give a grade to each one of the counties throughout the country. LaPorte had as healthy behaviors, we had the 92nd placement out of 92 counties. So the only thing to do is to go up, right? So lots of work, but we're getting there, and it keeps getting better and better, with the goal, it's a very big, what I call the hairy goal, of becoming top 10 healthiest communities in the state of Indiana by 2030. So we don't have a lot of time, and we are very aggressive, attempting to invite all of you to be part of this goal. The mission is very simple, is empowering LaPorte County to live healthy and well. We want the residents to have choices, to have, you know, opportunities. Not going to read the values in there, all of this, by the way, is on our website, therefore I'm going to go a little quicker here. This is an incredible, awesome group of leaders, that's my Board of Directors, very proud to work on their behalf, with them and for them, and we never forget the ones that came before this group, they're listed in here on the right side. So again, Kathleen Lang is our Chair, Scott Sievker, President, Vice Chair, Rich Schmetter, our Treasurer, and Michelle Magnuson, our, the Secretary of the Board, and please check our website so you get to know all those amazing individuals. So just very, very briefly, how did we come up with those topics? How did we select all of this? Well, of course, we did a lot of strategic planning. We are open in March 1 of 2016, when we received the first check from the proceeds of the CEO of LaPorte Hospital, IU Health, LaPorte Hospital. And through this strategic plan process, we did identify, and we are firm believers on data, that therefore we have a website just dedicated to information, open to all of you, data, 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 but how are we going to make decisions if we don't know what's needed to be changed? So here are the focus areas, healthy living, that's why you see the trails, that's why you see, it's going to be nutrition, lots of things related to, grants related to nutrition, and grants related to active living. We're not translating this into exercise, you do not need to go pump iron if that's not what you desire, please go for a walk, look at the amazing, amazing trails we have in here. But if you want to go pump iron, that's okay, go to Kathleen, there's a whole bunch of outdoor, there's a beautiful outdoor plaza there, or other items to do. Healthy Children, of course, is obvious, if we bring, can you imagine, just picture this, 20, 30, 40 years from now, if we start to focus on our children now, what kind of improvements can we bring in 30 years or 40 years? So it's very important to us, we have a lot of programs, and we fund a lot of different spaces related to children, school programs. Healthy Minds, it's exactly what Matt was just saying, he received a very large grant for three years, otherwise they could not open the clinic here. Yes, they have access to federal grants, and we love doing matching grants, by now you probably got the sense of this. City of LaPorte, go find federal money, come over, let's talk. County, find some money, come over, because it takes the whole village to fund whatever it is, and we are delighted to participate and be a partner. So don't translate, all we do, Mayor, is correct, it's not just trails, it just happens that those we celebrate a little more often. It's a little difficult to go celebrate Matt's program in, you know, in the basis that, plus we need to contend with privacy issues, you can imagine that. So this, and then of course, we have a Healthy LaPorte and Healthy Partners, which part of this is this building. The purpose of this building, this is a gift to the community, the public space, you see there are three very large rooms that we can open into a long, a big one, all of them named after lakes in LaPorte, Euphemine Lake here, Stone Lake, Clear Lake, we have Lily Lake, so there is, you can choose your lake in here, there are others inside, by the way, or lake, and so on. We try to honor our heritage, that you see beautiful pictures, all the decorations in this building, any artwork is related to our county, that's the trail right below here. We just wanted to give you a sense of what we have awarded so far, from November of 2017, the first year was structure, it's like creating a new business. Second year, we started to give grants. So from 2017 to now, June of 2021, we have awarded $22 million in grants to the county, the majority of them targeting LaPorte City and closed areas, and for the City of LaPorte, $6.4 million just for infrastructure improvements. So two very quick deep, I call those deep dives, those are programs that we coordinate, again, we do not deliver programs, but we invite everybody to the table, help us to solve a problem. Partners in Prevention is a $2.8 million segregated funding for three years of grants to every school in the county that accepted, to deliver evidence-based programs to be able to do prevention efforts. And of course, the halo effect of doing those prevention efforts are all the other programs that the teachers can bring to the students, and they just are in awe. Not only do we give them technical assistance, but we also have this program evaluated by the best of the best evaluating teams in the country. So in three years, we'll be able to bring to you the results of, wow, look at what those schools have done to improve lives of kids in our community. And part healthier babies, which is of course, a major concern of the whole county, especially in the medical field, the number of babies, that infant mortality and low birth weight, and again, we have everybody around the table, the two hospitals, the health department, you name it, to be able to bring solutions. We communicate loud and clear with the health department in Indianapolis, and they look, they attend every one of our meetings, by the way, because they were looking at us as a best practice. How can a county bring everybody together to solve a problem like you guys are doing? And they have been very intrigued by the approach, which is called RBA, Results-Based Accountability. We did not invent this, that's an incredible platform in how to solve social problems, and we certified some of our staff to be able to deliver those, put people around the table and solve that. Lots of progress towards that. So I hope I did it very quickly.
That was excellent.
He told me to go fast, but then I saw that we need to go even faster.
Questions? And thanks.
Go, yeah, well, thank you, go to our website, please, all those reports. All those reports are there. We want to be very transparent. Remember, we are a private, independent foundation, but we don't make any secrets. Everything is on website. We try to, you know, communicate as loud as we can. And celebrations like the mayor brings to the table, we appreciate what you do celebrating because that gives us an opportunity to communicate to the community what we're trying to accomplish. Buy into that vision, that's all we ask. Is that okay? Thank you. Can I go on to the next one?
Yes.
Do you want to set the tone?
What I'd like to say is, you know, we've all talked about our, the local fiscal recovery funds and how we want to spend those. And we've had individual conversations with the number one topic being housing. And we've all experienced what's happened at Maple Avenue, Jefferson Avenue, and Harrison Avenue. And the one thing as a partner we count on the Healthcare Foundation of LaPorte for is data. And if we're going to commit tax dollars, even at a federal level, to come back home, where are we going to spend the money? I think the spirit of the bill, and I'm not here to argue whether you support the bill or you don't, we were giving money at a local level and that should be our focus of how do we make an impact? And I asked Maria and the Healthcare Foundation of LaPorte provided actual data so you can see firsthand what the people living on Maple, Jefferson, and Harrison face financially, what the struggles we've seen, and why we think it's important to begin addressing homeownership for the long-term inhumane, clean housing. So with that, she will go briefly over the census tract, which is the largest poverty-stricken area in the county. So with that, Maria?
I'm going to start by making it, you know, a statement that I am not an expert on data. Of course, if you have been in this business as long as I have, grants and so on, you get to read data or discover where to search data in an appropriate way. But, and we do have a lot of our staff, the very large staff of four, that are very good at research. So with that, by the way, I would be remiss if I don't acknowledge Jen, say hello. Jen does a ton of extra things. She's an expert, in-house expert for a, a lot of different things, including technology. So, so I'm going to focus on this census tract the mayor is talking about in addressing the fact that we do have a website, attached to our website. If you go to HFL LaPorte, you find everything about grants and so on. This is data. The reason we gave this gift to the community is, imagine if you're writing a grant on behalf of the city or the county or your organization, and you have to search all over to discover what is the particular data that I'm trying, or the problem that I'm trying to solve. So here it is, guys, out in one database. Whatever you're doing that you're looking for numbers, you can explore LaPorte County health and demographic data. You can find local health and wellness resources, and we constantly update that. I want to discover if you have a place here, a food pantry. Who are your trustees? Go there, do, do, you'll find it. Whatever you're looking for, if it's not there, we will put there, communicate to us and we'll add to it. And then you can also learn about promising practices. What are the evidence? If you find, if you, as an example, if you discover that you, I want to learn more about mortality rate and know the rates we have in LaPorte County. If you keep clicking down and scrolling down, and I'll be happy to show any of you whenever you're interested, you can see that eventually you find, would you like to see best ways to solve this problem? If you click there, you'll see the evidence-based programs throughout the country. And if they're evidence-based, or if they're a best practice, or if this is just a good idea, and it tells you. So solutions are built in here too. So there are many different steps. So 10, 20, 30 is funded by the foundation, and it is powered by Conduit Healthy Communities Institute. And that's a web base and that update every, you know, almost every day. And again, this used to be an IBM company that branched out to just be able to do, bring in data. So this is what you're going to see. You can see health, you can see community data, economy, education, environmental, you can see demographics disparities. But the data I'm going to be showing you is under Explore Data, and it's right down here and it says Social Needs Index and Food Insecurity Index. Those are the two that I'm going to be sharing with you. So City of LaPorte, this particular census tract, I'll show you the map in a minute. We are going to be looking at demographics, housing needs, social needs index, food insecurity, and the neighborhood that Mayor reported to. So I call this the triangle. For the ones sitting on the side, look at your screen, right in front of you. It's good that your chairs have wheels. You can turn yourself if you want to see in a better way. But this is downtown area. You can see, just to locate a little bit more, the hospital is right here, can you see? Let's see, the YMCA is right here in the middle of the map. And then this is the courthouse. So this is the triangle that is, that the census tract, 1-8-0-9-1-0-4-2-3-0-0 Census Bureau. The census give a census tract for each area of the county. That's what they were referring to. So I call this, I know it's not a triangle, but to me, it looks like one. So I call this the Triangle Downtown, okay? So here is the numbers for that Triangle Downtown, the census tract. The population inside of that area, 2,208, which equates 2% of the total LaPorte County population. If we were around 22,000, 23,000 in LaPorte City, it's about 10% of the community. Male, 1,230, 55%, almost 56. Female, about 44%. And here are the ages, 5, 18, seniors, we have 249. And the median age, if you group everybody together, the median is 35.3. Here are the races, the majority are white, 80, you know, a little over 80%. African-American, black, 7.2. Others, you can see 1.1 or two or more races. And the Hispanic-Latino community on that area represents 14.9%. And the total housing in there, all the housing in LaPorte County equals 49,177 units. We, for that census tract, we have 1,150. So it's about 2.3% of the units in the entire county. So can you see the triangle right there in the little center? Okay. So when they do the index, they put a whole bunch of socioeconomic needs together. They combine multiple indicators, and this correlates with poor health outcomes. Remember, we're a healthcare foundation, we're looking for ways to improve health, but health is very broadly defined. If you don't have a roof over your head, if you don't have food to be able to provide to your children, you cannot be healthy. My husband, as, as an English teacher, tells me, if you cannot read, how can you be healthy? If you don't read well, how are you going to translate what the doctor is telling you in an effective way and read what he says on your prescription? So health goes into a lot of different buckets. So we're focused on this little triangle. And unfortunately, you see that the map legend tells you from 1 to 5, one lighter color, better socioeconomic index. Number 5, darker, darker color, not so good. So let's see where that one occupies. Again, this is just explaining to you what is a social index. Takes a lot of factors into, into account, and it ranks from 1 to 5. So income, poverty, if they're below poverty, unemployment, occupation, if they have a high school degree. Language, population, five plus years old that speak only English at home, how many of them do not or do. And you can see that the little triangle in the center of the whole county has the worst number throughout this county. Are you surprised? I was. Somehow, I always thought that LaPorte, you know, comparing to maybe, I shouldn't say that, but maybe other parts of the county, was not in as bad of a situation. So data brings awareness to us, and we need to be very focused on what can we bring to the table to help solve issues in here? So going on to the next slide. And again, it's a different way of seeing it, all the different census tract, and this happened to be the little downtown triangle. 93.8 socioeconomic. Same thing for food index. You can see that from 1 to 5, we happen to be the top one. And again, 96.7, that was the grade received by it. So I'm going to focus on, on a different, this is not a triangle, this is going to be a rectangular. This is Jefferson, Maple, and Harrison. Mary Ann Richards did a tremendous job collecting this information at the request of the mayor. She wanted to see, and you know who Mary Ann is, from the Office of Community Development and Planning, and she has access to a lot of data. And the, the area that I'm talking about is this rectangular right in the center of the triangle. Can you see it? Okay, can I identify? So we're just going to focus on that area and try to understand what do they have inside of this particular rectangular? There are 302 structures. Remember, those are structures, not buildings, meaning it's not, it could be a structure with four apartments, as an example, or one with 25, you know, I don't know. But those are structures. So inside of that area, we have 162 rentals, representing 54% of the whole area. 63 owner occupied, 21%. And then the commercial, the church, the schools, Lincoln School is located inside, YMCA is located inside. Those represented about a quarter of the structures in there. So going back to the big list of needs, you saw what's needed to improve that neighborhood, meaning you see that we need to tackle poverty, food security, you know, education, and so on and so on. This is just closing thoughts, and by no means we're bringing solutions to the table. This is the problem, guys, that it takes the whole village. This is the big, you know, you hear often, how do we eat an elephant? One bite at a time? This is going to be, what do we do for each piece of this big puzzle? You know, that's very, very important. So here are some closing thoughts, beginning ideas, just brainstorm internally, and we do that often, using all the tools we have. How do we solve this issue? How do we bring that whole neighborhood to a different level? You saw the birds on our entranceway? Do you know the meaning of those birds on a big wall? When you leave, take a look. What we're trying to do, as an example, in this building, is capacity building, is giving the not-for-profits, you know, is that education? We bring in the university here to deliver classes about not-for-profit, whatever it is, bringing people to the next level so they can fly and hopefully fly high. And that's the purpose of this whole spiel here. What are we looking for? Maybe engaging with the residents in the neighborhood, understanding residents' struggles and their hopes, ideas, identifying best practices from somebody else that have already been faced, other communities, best practices, identify, you know, neighborhood champions, involve all the not-for-profit partners to connect residents to programs and services. We have an array of services in this community. Are they aware of it? Can they tap into those programs? Bringing creative ways to instill neighborhood pride and make improvements. Example, should we have a pink party for a block or two? Should we improve the gardens? And I see this, last time I was in Brazil, I was amazed, one whole block or two or three of this particular neighborhood, that the neighbors created the front yard to be their vegetable yard. It was impressive. It was really impressive. Engage, and I'm just, we're just throwing ideas out there. It doesn't mean that we're saying we're going to do any of this. Engage other key stakeholders, schools, churches, business. Work with landlords to improve housing condition. We hear that often, that, you know, I have mold, I don't have, my, my roof is not that great, whatever it is. Affordable home loan programs and financial education. What can we do to improve the condition in there? I am here just to plant the seed, and I know the city of LaPorte is working very hard, thank you, Mayor, to be able to bring some solutions to the table and improve the conditions for all the residents. But I have to say, that's the heart of LaPorte, and we need to pay close attention to that little triangle.
Amazing data. And I think hopefully you'll see that there's some very good data of why things happen, why they do happen, where they do happen, right in the center, next to City Hall there. Thank you, Maria.
You're welcome. Back to my front. Thank you. Appreciate it, Mayor.
Last questions before she, nope, thank you. So that will bring us to an introduction of an ordinance, or I'm sorry, the fiscal recovery funds. I did a basic background, high-level presentation that we've each talked about and kind of put this as we start moving forward about ideas, thoughts, and how we move forward. Because before you will be a couple of specific items to hopefully approve in the next meeting. But I thought it'd be, be best if I start with a very brief overview of what we've all talked about. So with that, I think I have to give you a nod. So with the American Rescue Plan Act, LaPorte's plan for capitalizing on the 11.4 million from the fiscal recovery funds. So the priorities that we've talked about, creating affordable housing, updating the civic auditorium. And when we hear about tourism, hospitality, and we have the People's Building that is 100 years old, how are we going to move that building forward in the future when we have COVID issues of vaccinations, COVID testing, as well as ice storm? As you remember, either early last January, we had the ice storm and potentially we're going to need the civic for a place for people to stay while their electricity, heating was all out. As well, investing in high-quality water and wastewater infrastructure, and again, reviving LaPorte's tourism. And that's kind of the focus that we've talked about. And, and that will move forward next. Creating affordable housing, again, we've heard and heard and heard, and you'll hear more this evening later with 701 Maple. But what we're trying to do is setting a new standard for living in the city of LaPorte, creating a more humane condition of living for homes and qualified census tract. So we've seen in 701, at 701 Maple, where all the police calls, 265 in the first 254 days, to where Jeff Bachelor was going in, dealing with bedbugs and all the issues that we've seen, not only there, in fact, as of just this past week, Jeff had a house in this census tract where bedbugs were jumping off the walls. But he and Lisa Piersekowsky have been working to help people find alternative routes. More importantly, the bigger picture, breaking the chain of generational poverty and making homeownership more achievable. Horizon Bank is very interested in this and is really encouraging us to coordinate with some organizations in Indianapolis, or one organization in Indianapolis that has success at doing these specific things. And we can't do it, but we need council to be involved that this is the route we go to kind of lead this discussion. And it won't happen tomorrow. It won't happen in the next year. But in the future, as you heard Maria talk about, what this could be in 10, 20, and 30 years from now. This is the current situations. These are specific pictures of the current situation in many houses in that census tract. But we would like to create housing services to support healthier living. That's going to be conducive to mental and physical well, wellness is also the remediation of lead paint and other lead hazards to reduce risks of elevated blood levels in children. Then we move to the People's Building, updating the civic auditorium. You've all heard for years, air conditioning, the roof issues, seating as well. So you can combine tourism with a shelter, and the civic auditorium is truly the place to be in the city of LaPorte. And how do we leave this building for future generations? And as it says there, must ensure our community space is viable for the next 100 years. And updating, as you can see, some of, some of the equipment that is in that's working or not working. And updating, as you can see, uh, some of, some of the equipment that is in, that's working or not working in the civic right now. Uh, so when you talk about HVAC roof, auditorium seating, and ADA accessibility, when we have seniors walking up and down those aisleways without any handles. So you first heard about housing, you then heard about tourism, and dealing with COVID, and, and protecting our, uh, the community's place. Now we look at high quarter, our high-quality water and wastewater infrastructure, which is definitely part of the bill. And like I said, we have a hundred-year-old infrastructure and the roads that go along with it. For example, we have the best park system around, who has driven on Truesdale Avenue? We hear every day about Truesdale Avenue and the type of road structure that leads into our parks. And again, reviving LaPorte's tourism. That's a big part of this bill. Our parks are the gateway to our city's natural, uh, resources and lakes. Uh, helping the physical and mental health benefits. When you hear, read about this bill, the lower income, the people of color, our strong Hispanic population, uh, those that may not be able to afford to go get, uh, a gym pass or a membership to work out and become healthier, the option is our trails, our paths, and that's exactly what this bill supports. Especially those that are stuck home with COVID, to get them out and about, to remain healthy. And then what we're about to see is the aging park fleet that presents, uh, daily challenges. And again, aging equipment, costly repairs, diminishing fleet. Uh, I've asked Mr. Schreiber to come up for just a brief minute, um, because these are one of the specific items that we're going to ask, uh, approval for. When we want to promote tourism, if we don't have the equipment necessary to keep it clean, how do we do that for people to get out on our equipment? So, Mr. Schreiber?
No, absolutely, and, and thank you for the opportunity. As we often talk about our, our natural resources, we just celebrated Lake Fest, which celebrates our lakes, uh, which makes LaPorte unique, but our parks are the gateway to the lakes. So if, if lake is the key to our tourism, the parks have to be properly maintained, and the challenges, uh, just continue to add up as far as, uh, a park fleet that has been not purposefully neglected, but just because of economic situations and, and what the budget would dictate, uh, a lot of it has been left behind over the years. Uh, we have a significantly outdated fleet, uh, which, you know, our staff must overcome on a daily basis in order to provide safely maintained parks, well-groomed parks, um, which provide that free recre- recreation and, and, and exercise opportunities that the mayor discussed. We do need to think of the population at large as well with this, as far as not just tourism, but how do we, uh, allow opportunities for our residents, uh, in all of our pocket parks across this, uh, city? How do we properly maintain those? Um, when we are down trucks, when we are down mowers, uh, we can be fully staffed, but still not be anywhere near efficient enough to where we need to be. Uh, we often exhaust our, exhaust our repair budget by mid to late summer, making choices come August and September of what gets set aside, or what do we try to do a budget transfer on, maybe to try and get something fixed? It's a perpetual issue, uh, to say the least. I mean, we're still driving trucks, we have three trucks that we're driving that are twenty-plus years old in our park department. Uh, and that's with three trucks that we're never able to replace. So we're down three trucks that we don't even own anymore, uh, because they've gone out or we've lost for one, one reason or another. Um, we have mowers and other equipment that has far exceeded their life expectancies. We've been blessed with some pretty good mechanics over the years that have been able to keep us up and going. But like I said, even at, even at Beechwood, uh, you know, we've struggled to keep good equipment out there as well, adequately maintained, especially out on the, uh, the, uh, rough areas. And that's essential for us to be able to do that and be a competitive golf course. And the civic auditorium, uh, you know, they only, only fleet needs that they have are a plow truck and a mower, but the plow truck's eighteen years old and the mower's fourteen. So that gives you a good idea of, of where they're at with things. So the need is, is, is definite. It, it definitely has an impact on our ability to present parks in a proper way for tourism. And it obviously impacts as well our ability to, uh, keep the parks safely maintained and attractively maintained for our residents to get out and get their exercise and be out there. We found out through COVID the importance of our parks. Um, it was the safe harbor for everybody to get out to during the shutdown months, and subsequently over the last summer and into the fall, a place where families could feel safe and get out and get their exercise and get their fresh air, not just for their physical health, but also for their mental health. Um, just to be able to be outdoors, whether it was a walk through the woods at Soldier Memorial Park, or just an opportunity to be on the playground down at their neighborhood park. So, uh, I would hope that you would support this. It is a long time coming for us, and I think this is a really outstanding opportunity to do, uh, and get it done in the right fashion.
Questions for Mr. Schreiber? Thank you, Mark. So we'll move to the final, uh, our goal, using these funds, our goals are to mitigate the impact of COVID-nineteen, which we can do at the civic with proper HVAC. And also, Mr. Ben Versey, I think he's here, also should be given credit for all the work he's done at the civic, dealing with all these hiccups through the years on old equipment. As well, help those in low-income communities, including minorities, which again, you see at the triangle. And then revitalizing tourism in the city of LaPorte, which is, uh, one of the industries that were impacted by COVID, uh, and is asked to do what we can to help there. So with that, um, we do have a introduction of an ordinance, and I will turn it over to Councilwoman Cutler.
Your Honor, I move to introduce an ordinance, read for the first time in its entirety.
I have a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cutler.
Additional appropriation for ARP Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, Fund Number One Seven Six. Whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the annual budget, now therefore, Section One, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of LaPorte, LaPorte County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the fund named and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the same. ARP Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, Fund Number One Seventy-Six. Housing in Qualified Census Tract, Amount requested, one-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, Amount approved, one-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand. Park and Recreation Equipment, Amount requested, eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand, Amount approved, eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Section Two, the City of LaPorte established Fund One Seventy-Six, American Rescue Plan, ARP Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, on April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one, by adopting Ordinance Number Thirteen dash Twenty-Twenty-One. The American Rescue Plan Act identified the purposes for which these funds may be spent. Section Three, funds spent for housing in Qualified Census Tract are to be used for improvements to seven-oh-one Maple Avenue, LaPorte, Indiana. Seven-oh-one Maple was previously condemned by the City of LaPorte due to various uninhabitable conditions at the property. These funds shall be used for improvements to the heating, cooling systems, lead-based paint remediation, and mold remediation. These investments will provide thirty-eight affordable housing units in the city of LaPorte. These funds benefit small businesses, assist households, and improve housing conditions to individuals negatively affected by COVID-nineteen. Section Four, funds spent for park and recreation equipment will allow the park department to replace and purchase needed equipment to aid the city of LaPorte in attracting tourism, travel, and hospitality. Penda ordinance.
Your Honor, as the, uh, Chief of the Grammar Police, I'd like to point out to Attorney Otis, Section Three, uh, mod remediation should be mold.
I corrected it and said mold.
Appreciate it. Councilwoman Frankie's catching that.
So this is only for discussion this evening, uh, and again, just to clarify, the housing in the Qualified Census Tract is to deal with lead paint, mold, HVAC updates at seven-oh-one Maple, which we all clearly know what's been happening there. And then second would be to make the commitment to the equipment for the LaPorte Park and Recre- Recreation Department. So with that, we do need to have a public hearing, which means we will open the public hearing up to the public for comments regarding these two specific items. Is there anybody that would like to speak from the public regarding these two items?
Mayor, I'll just comment on, uh, July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, there was, there, we, this was published in the LaPorte County Herald Dispatch, uh, and we do have the affidavit of publication.
Mr. Bachelor from Code Enforcement, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Dermody, uh, Council. Uh, my name is Jeff Batch, I'm Director of Code Enforcement. Um, just kind of want to give my support for the seven-oh-one, uh, Maple Street. You know, everybody knows how many problems we had there before. And with the new person that, that bought it, all the changes that they're doing to the place, you know, and, and they've been easy to work with, they're very communication, they talk to us, we communicate well with each other. So I'm just in support of everything, and, and just ask you to support what's going on there.
And as a reminder, this will remain affordable living in this area, but humane, clean, respectful living. Anybody else from the public? Hearing none, I will close the public comment portion of this. Council discussion?
Oh, I'll add for the council, Eric Walsh is here from Baker Tilly, who's been very helpful in, uh, making sure that we comply with the buckets of funds that, that this money can be used towards. And again, part of the reason that you have some of the language in here is because it mirrors what is in the, the ARP, uh, Coronavirus Local Recovery Fund. So, uh, we feel very confident that all of the funds in here are being used appropriately.
Further counsel discussion? Hearing none, we'll move this to...
But I'd like to add that, I think that all three of the causes represented in the presentation are, are worthy and just. But, um, I don't know, maybe you know this, Attorney, um, would sidewalks qualify under this at all? I think that we've got a massive problem with, with our existing sidewalks.
I'd be happy to look at that. I, obviously, this is just, the, these funds, we have plenty, we have additional funds that we can use here. But, uh, I'm happy to look at that. Uh, I, I think that, um, again, the information Mr. Walsh has provided, and, and the, the way the law is written, it's, it's pretty broad. Um, and, and so if that's something you're definitely interested, I'm happy to, to look at that for you, Councilman Frankie.
And there is, uh, for Mr. Walsh not to put him on the spot, if you'd like to come to the mic anyway, Baker Tilly.
I think it's only fair he drove so far to get here.
Exactly.
Eric Walsh, partner with, uh, Baker Tilly, uh, been the municipal advisor for the city for many years. What Mr. Otis was explaining, I think the easiest way to explain the bill language is it's very broad, but there's a lot of gray areas. So for instance, the sidewalks, if you could tie it to some of your trails or getting kids to areas that can be healthier, more active, probably we can find a, a way to do that. If you're saying, we just want to replace sidewalks because we have bad sidewalks for infrastructure, that's really not going to be ineligible use. You've got to tie it some way back to the impacted individuals.
But you could actually use, a- as we talk about seven-oh-one Maple, you could tie that there because there is a pocket park on the corner.
And in, in the QCT, the Qualified Census Tract, um, you have very broad usage. That, that's the one area in the city you could do quite a bit infrastructure-wise and not necessarily have to tie it quite back to COVID. So in that area, you, you have a lot more flexibility, for sure.
Further questions for Mr. Walsh? Thank you. Okay, we will move on. Bert Cook with LEAP, Development Agreement for Seven-Oh-One Maple.
Are we, do we need to vote on that resolution?
It's an ordinance.
It's an ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor, I, I promised I'd be back, and here I am. Bert Cook, Executive Director with the LaPorte Economic Advancement Partnership. So some of you heard, I used to tell a joke back in twenty-fifteen, you know, we, for those of you that are here, we did the Arconic Project, which was a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-million-dollar capital investment they made in our community. And when I would have the opportunity to speak on the projects, I would, you know, tell people publicly about this, and it would never fail that someone would put up their hand and be like, yeah, yeah, that's great, but tell us about the Dunkin' Donuts that we hear is coming. And in a similar way, with the, with the ma- with Mayor Dermody, I feel like every day of mine for the last year has started with, okay, that's all great, but what's going on with seven-oh-one Maple? And, uh, and I know we all kind of feel the same way. So I'm really happy to, to be here tonight, um, to be able to present this to you. You've heard some of the details. I'll be brief, um, but just kind of reference a few different things that are going on with this property. Um, so Maple Commons LLC is, is investing in this property. Tommy Vary is here tonight, Tommy, if you put your hand up, please. Um, and, and we appreciate, uh, their interest in our community. So they're investing about one-point-eight-million dollars into seven-oh-one Maple. They're going from forty-six current units down to thirty-eight units. That'll be a mix between studios, um, one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, and there's a two-bedroom with the den, which is the penthouse. The rents are, you know, from five-twenty-five to, uh, to ten-fifty, so as the mayor mentioned, very affordable. The city, and, and when I say the city, I mean, our department heads have asked the developer to take a holistic or a global look at this property along with other properties in the area, to figure out a plan to, uh, potentially solve a lot of the parking issues that exist there. I think we'd all agree, any good housing development has parking associated with it. Um, and that hasn't had parking up, up until now. So they've been willing to, um, to, to look at that and to create a plan that, that addresses some of those parking issues. They're currently under contract to purchase eight-oh-seven Michigan, which is the green and yellow building that is next to City Hall. Potentially can, uh, by, by demolishing that structure, can add forty new, um, parking spaces throughout the area. They've been gracious enough to, to work with the city to find a way to add, um, of those forty, to make six of those spots would be associated with City Hall and would, would solve some of our parking issues at City Hall as well. They've been, Tommy and, and his team have been working with our engineering department to make sure that this development is, uh, is looking at sustainability and, and the, how we deal with stormwater in the area, which is extremely important. So, uh, Nick Minnick and, and Sarah Nimitz on our engineering team are, are working with, with Tommy to make sure we come up with a plan that best uses the space that we have available in that area. We appreciate that partnership. And, and ultimately, what we're requesting for you today, you, you have a development agreement in front of you. Um, I, I know we didn't read that entire document, that's a pretty standard agreement that we've used in the past. There are a couple of exhibits that go with that. One is a site plan, um, which, uh, shows the potential parking improvements we referenced. The other is a timeline, and I know the timeline is small print, but you, if you, if you look at that closely, you'll notice that they're, uh, with the council's support. They intend to get started right away and move as quickly as possible to get these units to market, which is another, I think, important factor in all of this, from my perspective and from our entire team's perspective. So we're asking for, in this development agreement, we've outlined their performance, which I've, which I've touched on many of the, um, the relevant details to that, but we're asking for one-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, um, from the Coronavirus Recovery Fund. It's going to that, those dollars are going to be tied directly to improvements in the heating system, the lead-based paint remediation and mold remediation that's throughout the building, ultimately resulting in a much healthier, uh, living environment for, uh, for all of the residents that will occupy that space. And, you know, that's important in its own right, but never more so important than in the midst of a global pandemic that we, that we're in right now. So, um, wanted to thank, uh, Attorney Otis and Eric for the, for the help in, in kind of working through this as quickly as possible, making sure that we could present a, a full, well-rounded project to you for your consideration tonight. I, I'm happy to try and answer any questions that maybe I didn't cover. And if there's something I can't answer, I'm sure Tommy would be willing to answer those as well.
Bert, just real quick, as we worked on this agreement together, um, the developer has another project in, in the city right now, is that, is that correct?
Correct. Um, the, we know the building as the Lowe's building, the three-unit, um, downtown, the, it's red. Now, there are different partners on that project, but he is actively working in our community. Um, and, uh, actually, you know, I know him and his fam- Tommy and his family were here for Lake Fest and, uh, and are very quickly becoming part of the LaPorte community.
I, I guess one of the questions I had asked you, because we're making a very big, the city would be making a big financial commitment in that project, he's done everything he has indicated to you that he planned to do, is that fair to say?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, you know, we've, we've... Yeah, absolutely. You know, we've, we've, any project of this scope involves a number of departments and, and a lot of communication in the early phases. And, and they've been terrific. As, as Jeff mentioned, our team has looked at that as a, as a whole. And, and Tommy and his team have been very communicative and willing to, to work with us to make adjustments to the plans that will better benefit the city. And, and I think you get a sense of that in just looking at kind of the parking and the rectifying some of the issues in that area.
So any other questions?
Not a question, but a comment to Tommy. On behalf of the Traffic Commission, I just want to say thank you for adding parking into your plan here. There's, that's an issue around there that comes to Traffic Commission a lot. So thank you.
Further questions, comments? Now, we do have a develop, development agreement for 701 Maple. And we're going to ask Councilman Vincent to read the first paragraph, but understand the approval of the development agreement is pending approval of the adoption of the additional appropriation at the next meeting. So with that...
We need a motion.
Do I have a motion to...
Honorable Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to read the development agreement for approval.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Vincent.
The development agreement, the development agreement is made and entered to on this day of 2021 by and between the Common Council of the City of LaPorte, the city, and Maple Commons LLC, the developer. The city and developer are collectively referred to as the parties.
Discussion? Hearing none. Again, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any last further discussion? Knowing that this will not take effect unless the adoption of the additional appropriation is passed at the next meeting. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ficus, introduction of an ordinance.
Your Honor, I move to introduce an ordinance, read for the first time in its entirety.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Ficus.
Additional appropriation for Coronavirus Relief Fund, Fund Number 152. Whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the annual budget, now therefore, Section 1, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of LaPorte, LaPorte County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the fund named and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Coronavirus Relief Fund, Appropriation 152-999-359. Coronavirus Relief Fund Other, Amount requested $33,000, Amount approved $33,000. End of ordinance.
If I could, Clerk Treasurer Parthoon, this is, $33,000 is for repayment to the Park Department Civic?
Yes, part of it is for during the COVID pandemic, which we are still in, the Civic lost revenue due to events that it couldn't hold. But it also was a place where the community was able to gather, to go get COVID tested. And I believe there were several vaccination clinics there. So part of the ability to, we, we got an additional $70,110, and we wanted to make sure that we committed part of those monies back to the Civic for their partnership in, in all they did during the, during the global pandemic. And then the other part is part of a Color Safe Street grant match that will probably come before the Board of Works at some point soon. You can speak more to that.
And that's something that, I've worked with Laura Cutler. She's been a lead on this. As we talk about a design that makes LaPorte special, and you talk about the Stitch, which is north of, on the north side of Lincoln Way, Monroe, and making that more of a child, family-friendly place to be is an exciting opportunity. And these funds that we're being paid back with, we want quality look, quality design. And we have Councilwoman Cutler that can help lead us in that direction. And I don't know if you want to speak to that, but I'm excited to hopefully bring that to the next meeting, correct?
It has to be Board of Works.
Or through Board of Works, at the next Board of Works meeting, not tomorrow, but the second meeting.
Yep.
I can give a little detail of what he's talking about. Mayor Bloomberg started a few years ago, a project, an asphalt art project, that beautifies not only murals of downtown, but streets and walkways, and encourages safety for pedestrians and also a fun, lively atmosphere. And in that area of the Stitch that we are using more and more often as sort of a gathering area, and wanting people to feel inspired and motivated and excited about specific neighborhood sections, that was an area we thought we could tie into both Plaza 618 with the future of the bridge that would go over to Clear Lake. So we're hoping to create a space there that is vibrant, lively, energetic, and safe, and use some of those asphalt art programs to do that. That helps.
Questions? With that, I'd like to open it up for a public hearing on this, these two items. Is there anybody that would like to speak from the public?
We'll show, as well, that this has been... Publication, this was published in the LaPorte County Herald Dispatch on July 22.
Any last opportunity to speak from the public?
Yes, Your Honor.
Mr. Chudalik, please come in and state your name and address for the record.
Marty Chudalik, F Street. Quite a few months ago, I brought up the idea of continuing sidewalks across the railroad tracks at, say, Detroit Street and Tyler Street. Just wondering if that could be implemented in this overpass thing as well, so that there's easy crossing for the people with wheelchairs and such that I see going over to Kroger from the Triangle area and such like that. So I would like the city to consider extending sidewalks across the crossings at Detroit as well as Tyler Street, or not Tyler, Madison. But Tyler also has the same situation where it doesn't have sidewalk on both north and south sides of the tracks. Just throwing that out there.
You said Madison and...
Madison, Detroit, and Tyler. None of those have sidewalks on the north side of the tracks.
Thank you. Other public comment?
I'll, I'll just comment to Mr. Chudalik. I'm not sure if you've seen the heart of LaPorte Plan, but there is a pedestrian bridge that's being planned to go over Monroe, the railroad tracks at Monroe.
Right.
And that trail should lead right by that Kroger as well.
I'm aware of that. It just takes people out of the way, having to walk those extra three blocks over to Monroe, rather than being on the cross on a safe walkway over Madison, for example.
Sure.
Further comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll now close the public hearing. Any further counsel comment? Okay, we will move the, this ordinance to the next meeting in August. Other business? I just want to say thank you for your patience. This has been probably one of our longer meetings, but impactful. And when we talk about making a difference for the future of LaPorte, this meeting are, are one of the first steps to make that happen. And again, thank you to the Healthcare Foundation of LaPorte and Maria Fruth for allowing us to use this facility and show people what our community is about, and more importantly, the difference they make in the residents' lives every day across our community. So with that, any other business?
Motion to adjourn?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.